It has gotten much better. I did some papers on where I found some booths where you can recycle items. You do stuff on housing with HUD Housing, some of these other places. I thought maybe if you had the information, you could apply it to the file and if the people were interested then maybe something could be done, just a little something. I finally got a computer. I'm so happy.
Thank you so much. Yes, you can give those to the clerk. Next, please.
Yes. Speaker, but bottom line, the way most of us are here is the pods of where you think, plan on trying to put them. Over there by Juliana's Restaurant. That area is family, family restaurant, family bar, two schools within walking distance. One of them happens to be for special needs and I have a grandchild that is special needs. I understand they gotta go somewhere. Nobody wants to be on streets, cold. But if I got anything to say about it, and I'd probably say most of us here, it's not gonna be in our neighborhood. It'll make it unsafe for my child, unsafe for my grandchildren. We all know what's happened when they were down to Bronson Park. What happened when they were over by Mill Street. This is not happening to my neighborhood.
Thank you. And if you do want your name in the minutes, if you desire, there's a place to write it down right over here on the podium. Name and contact information. Yes, next, please.
Hello, my name's Nathan Browning. I live on Wellington Road in the Oakland-Winchell Drive neighborhood. I'm also a Complete Streets Advisory Committee member and a Community Development Act Advisory Committee member. So I have a pretty decent perspective on both affordable housing and complete streets in the city of Kalamazoo. And I want to connect, given that we're talking about Imagine Kalamazoo and Safe Streets for All today. I want to connect how safer transportation infrastructure can affect housing. So last fall, the city commission, previously elected, passed ordinance changes that changed the city's parking maximums to parking minimums. This is an important step in our code, just because I've heard through the grapevine that developers are stuck in the mode of just placing the maximum number of parking spots without thinking about alternative options. And if we truly made biking, walking, and transit truly viable options and alternatives to driving, developers might gain this confidence and instead of placing, you know, X percent of their land as parking, they might be able to designate that as housing. And so this idea of building homes rather than parking spaces is closely tied to what is actually a viable opportunity for transportation for the people that live here. And so I believe that everything in the built environment is interconnected and all the things that we do are interconnected. And so the Safe Streets for All projects and Imagine Kalamazoo are ways that we can bring and bridge these things altogether to solve many problems all at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Doug Hamster and I own CJ's Pub on 1027 Schuster. And I'm here to talk about the pods also. I've been there 30 years. Juliana's has been there 35 years. We're family-run restaurants. And we definitely think this is not the best place. We have, between the two of us, we have customers coming from 5:00 in the morning to after midnight. And there's safety concerns for our employees and our customers. If my cousin, if my employees don't feel safe, it's hard enough to get people to work there now. It's gonna be impossible to get people to work. And I don't know if you know it or not, the land is deemed toxic. Ironically, it's the city of Kalamazoo that made it toxic, I'm told, from when the city yard was operating on it. If you get on the website of the people who are gonna run it and look at their rules, you know, they state, you know, they're gonna accept people with existing conditions, which I totally get. But there's no rule for getting mental health, alcohol, or drug treatment. They get to do what they want. They get to have dogs there. And, yeah. And already, we have semi-trucks coming down the road every two minutes because you guys approved the asphalt plant there a couple of years ago. So that's a safety concern also to us. And for the record, I called the Gospel Mission and asked them how many beds they have available. And they said, "We have plenty of beds available at all times, men and women." So there are places for people to go when they want to follow the rules. And I get the, everybody's the "not in my backyard," but why do you think that is? Because everybody knows.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to take advantage of this public comment period? Yes.
Hello, thank you, everyone. My name's Daniel Baer. I'm here as a representative of Mode Shift Kalamazoo. And I just wanted to raise my voice and support for the Safe Streets for All initiative for Kalamazoo. I'm especially looking forward to the Level Street bike lane that is possibly gonna be going in this summer. It'll provide a really important part of a bicycle network that our city is in the process of putting in right now. So I just wanted to give my thumbs up for that and say I support that. And thank you all for continuing to raise up this issue. And, yeah, we'll keep on.
Thank you. Yes, next, please.
Hello, my name is Kim Harris. I'm in Kalamazoo County. I live in Portage. However, I do frequent Juliana's Restaurant. And I'm concerned as a patriot of what's the proposal for those pods across the street there. And I too heard that there is, the land is toxic. So I'm going to read a quote from Michelle Davis, Executive Director of Housing Resources Incorporated, that says, "The KZU POD community offers a powerful opportunity for all of Kalamazoo to come together in compassionate action so that people facing homelessness can change their situation." I agree with that. I believe we should be compassionate. However, if there is land that is toxic, I don't think that's being compassionate to put people that are already faced against different situations where they don't have a home and now you want to put them on some land that potentially is toxic, what's that gonna do to them for their health? I don't think that's a good situation. I just think it's stacking the deck even further against them. Again, on compassion against the homeless, I don't think this is the place. I don't see any grocery stores over there. I'm not sure where the closest transportation is for these people. Yes, there's two restaurants across the street. One's a bar, one's a family restaurant. And, you know, I don't know where all the services are gonna come for those people. So that's my concern for the city of Kalamazoo. I'm a resident of Kalamazoo County, so thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Yes, next, please.
Hello, Commission. My name is Tristan. Firstly, I want to say, I'm so glad that we're gonna have some houses for people to be living in. People living on the streets is just not fair. So I'm really glad we have a place to put these pod homes that you're going. You know, there's been a lot of complaints about, you know, this place, or that place, or another place. But I'm really glad that we're finally moving forward with that plan and giving the place, some people some shelter over their heads. I'd also like to say that when it comes to the housing issue, when it comes to homelessness, we have to address it before people are living on the streets if we really want to have some change in the city. And so addressing the systemic issues is what my group, We the People, is trying to focus on. We've been meeting with several of the commissioners. We spoke with Commissioner Cooney last week for another meeting. We've spoken with Commissioner Decker and Commissioner Wilson about a potential city resolution in favor of a House Bill 4947. We are very excited to be meeting. I have received an email from Commissioner Hess recently and spoke with Decker before the meeting now. I'm hoping that we can meet with you as well, Mayor Anderson, and Commissioner Prairiedale and Commissioner Hoffman about this. And hopefully, we'll be able to present here at this city commission committee as a whole meeting sometime soon to share with you about the history of the rental process here in the state of Michigan and the fight that we have to try to secure some systemic change to help renters and to prevent more people from ending up on the street. So thank you so much for your time. I hope you have a great day.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike Brodowski, adjunct professor for Western Michigan University, as well as Assistant Director of Member Services and Operations for Western Michigan University. I am here to speak out against the pod community in the set area. Just some stuff as I was doing some research online about it. The same encampment or pod area in Burlington, Vermont, had several issues with this. One former resident stated that before, just, there was hardly any garbage, needles, or anything like that until the community was put in place. And then afterwards, they noticed a dramatic increase in the amount of used needles, garbage, loitering, all that around the area. Excuse me. And with, you know, all the new housing being redone over there to be built or to be renovated, it's been nice to see that whole area be brought up, as well as the patrons that utilize Juliana's Restaurant, CJ's Pub, as well as the Expo Center and the Family Services Center over there. I just think having all that and all that connected to each other could have a negative impact on that community as whole, as well as the whole toxic wasteland issue as well. So, but with that, that's my piece and really appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to me and for doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, next, please.
My name is Shona Espinoza and I'm coming here because I'm glad the pods are gonna be put out. Because people like me, I'm having to move for the third time because my rent is being increased by $400. People don't look at people being homeless or houseless because of situations that are going on within their, because of their landlord or apartment complex. They were bought and because they want to renovate it, they want to move it up by $400. And I wasn't even given 30 days. I had to make a decision within nine days if I was gonna stay or move. So for me to move, I have to make three times the rent, three times the amount of rent. If I stay, I have to come up with an extra $750 for the security deposit. And days later, I have to come up with $1,300 for rent. So how is this okay that these landlords are able to do this? And this is why so many people are out here on the street. What am I supposed to do when I have my son and a grandson that are seven and three? What are we supposed to be out on the street and be out on the street? Where's there to go? Because there's people that don't want these pods or don't want certain housing because it isn't what they want. Or it's not, it goes against things that they believe in or that the value of their housing is gonna go down. So there's many reasons why people are houseless. So what am I supposed to do? By the, by the 26th, I'm not receiving no help. You have to have an eviction. This is the third time since last year, February, that I had to move. So how is that fair? But it's okay for these landlords to continue to do this. So I'm asking you as a commission to help people like me in situations like this. Because I get up and go to work every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to take advantage of this opportunity for public comment? Yes.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Halcom. I'm a frequent user of the Juliana's Restaurant and I'm also a frequent user of the Expo Center and also of the Business Loop. There's a lot of traffic on the Business Loop. There's a lot of people that go to the Expo Center and goes to Juliana's Restaurant. If you put those pods there, you're gonna decrease that popularity. Whenever you have these encampments with the homeless, it has a tendency to have panhandling, drug use, brings it to that area. And you're bringing that area into an area that has two schools, two blocks from basically where you're wanting to put this. It also includes that, what the other people have brought up, is that that area is contaminated. We don't want to put those there. I have utmost respect for the pods, but just not the right location for it. It needs to be put someplace out in the community where you're not gonna hamper businesses and other people and schools put them at risk from those type of people that basically need help and they need that assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
Good evening. I'm Toby Hannah Davies and I live in the city. Most of us know someone who's had really hard things happen to them. Things that made it impossible to pay their regular bills without help, like a big medical bill or a big car repair bill. Some of us have even had that experience ourselves. And some of us are the ones who have helped out a relative or a friend who needed help to stay in their home or get to their job. And your compassion made a huge difference. But some families cannot help. That's how homelessness starts for many people. Whatever your fears are about the pods, you can relax. The pod community is nothing like a homeless encampment. It's a managed community with round-the-clock supportive staff and round-the-clock security. It will be gated for everyone's security and comfort. It's a place where people have security and privacy and dignity, things that are almost impossible if you're homeless. Pod communities are successful in other cities. Please give our pod community a chance. Please don't assume everything you hear is true. Please come to the meetings to get your questions answered. Please imagine that one of the people who needs a pod is your own son or daughter or nephew or niece or grandchild. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm Carrie Sluter and I live on Lake Street, about a block away from the area where they're talking about putting the pods. And I have children in that neighborhood. It's a drug neighborhood and it's a low-grade neighborhood as it is. I've been struggling and working on my home to build a good, safe home for my children as best I can and what I can afford. And I worked hard to pay for my taxes and pay to increase the value of my home. My children's safety is my first, my first and foremost priority, as I hope it is for the city and the counties. I'm not opposed to helping those who are in trouble, but to lower the standards of, or the value of my home or to put my children at risk if we have no guarantee of who's going in those homes, what their history is, are they drug offenders, are they rapists or murderers that have come out of prison? We should have a right to know that and if they pursue putting those there, we, the people, should have the right to know that. But also, for the value of our neighborhood, it's not a safe place. If you put people that are struggling in a struggling community, how are you helping them? If all the things they need are not there to be provided. All they're gonna be around is other people who are struggling in the neighborhood. Who's to say that my children aren't gonna walk down the road and find drug paraphernalia or more bottles, alcohol bottles, or needles and drug paraphernalia on the sidewalks where they ride their bikes? I already stay concerned about the safety of my children and I'm doing everything I can to move out of that neighborhood. But if my home value is lowered or those go in, what are the chances of the lower, the chance of my home being sellable?
Yes, I'm sorry, yep. Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Paul Sutherland. I live at 109 North Berkeley, where my wife Pam and I have lived for about 35 years. I'm a former member of the Kalamazoo College faculty for 30 years and I'm here to voice my support for the Safe Streets for All program and encourage you to strongly consider making strong connections between Western Michigan University, Kalamazoo College, and downtown Kalamazoo. It'd be a great effort. And I look forward to George Waring's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers this evening that'd like to provide a public comment for our committee of the whole meeting? Seeing no one else, I want to thank everybody that took the time, made the effort to come down here. And I know we had a conversation relative to this pod community. I just want to remind folks that there is nothing on our agenda at our business meeting related to that. I would suggest anyone that's interested to stay informed. There will certainly be very particular opportunities to, for, before any actions take place, to make further comments and to gain information about what's going on. So, once again, thank you for coming and expressing your interests for those of us here. So now, at the committee of the whole, we've got two large agenda items we're gonna move on to. And at this point, I'm gonna turn it back over to City Manager Rizma.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We have two items this evening. First, we'll be receiving a presentation by our Assistant City Manager Rebecca Kick on Imagine Kalamazoo 2035. Rebecca?
I'm here just to give you a very brief overview of where we're at, where we're going with Imagine Kalamazoo 2035. Just as a reminder, and for some new commissioners who weren't a part of Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, Imagine Kalamazoo is the opportunity that we do every 10 years to engage the entire community around our strategic vision, which is for the organization and then also the master planning process. So the, this will be the second time that we've done our Imagine Kalamazoo process. The first time was when I was a brand-new employee here at the city in 2014. Can you believe it's been 10 years, friends? And it was conducted to update our master plan. And this is really when, you know, working with my staff and working with the community members that I was talking to at the time, we really started to think about how different we wanted this experience of our master plan and the process to be than it was in the past. Staff was very heavily involved in not only the outreach to the community during Imagine Kalamazoo, but also the writing of the plan. So with, with the writing of the master plan, this is when we also said, wow, this is a great opportunity for us to update our strategic vision. We have done our national community survey in 2014 as well. That's a benchmarking survey that we do every two years. We felt that this was a really important time for us to use that next level of community survey information, also to inform our plans. So what the, the sort of next level thinking of Imagine Kalamazoo was, during a master plan, which is typically a land use and transportation plan, and I'll give you a little bit more information about what's in each of those plans, we would hold a town hall meeting such as this. And we would say, "Come, give us your thoughts on housing, transportation, you know, green space, public spaces." And we wouldn't talk about much else, zoning. But with Imagine Kalamazoo, we said, "No, there's so many other things that people need to talk about, things that are affecting them in their neighborhoods. Let's make sure everybody can talk about whatever they need to talk about. And we'll make sure that information gets to who it needs to get to." Whether that meant that it went to a different department or it went to a partner organization. And so we hired a really great company at the time. And we're gonna be looking for a similar company to hire again this year that was able to provide us a transcript, like all the raw data of all the Post-it notes, every comment, every survey that we got in, so that I could sort it and say, "Okay, well, what did we hear about housing? What did we hear about early childhood education? What did we hear about some of these things that we know are on people's minds?" And how will we get that information to our partners? So it's really important to know that that's, again, our commitment to Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 is that we will always talk to everybody about everything that's on our mind in the city and we'll get that information to the department or to the organization that it belongs. So I briefly mentioned that the main pieces, the big plans that the city is working on is the strategic vision, which sets our destination. This is our vision, our mission, and our values for those next 10 years. On every single one of your agenda items, it's always telling you at the very end, what strategic vision goal does this item align with? Maybe economic vitality, might be shared prosperity, could be complete neighborhoods or environmental responsibility. There are 10 strategic goals that came out of that past planning process. It's likely that our next strategic vision will also have 10 strategic goals. But those, again, become our guiding values, our guiding tenants for that. The master plan is what we are mandated to do by state. It's done every 10 years. And it really holds the Planning Commission accountable to the future land use map, to the land use, and to the transportation plans. It becomes a very high-level process document for that particular planning, for the Planning Commission and for the Planning Department. So how do these plans relate to each other? The strategic vision is the big overarching, the highest-level plan. The master plan is the next plan, really driving many of our decisions. But then, we have the other plans. Like I said, Imagine Kalamazoo really populates multiple plans throughout our outreach. And some of those plans are listed here, like our Transportation Improvement Plan, our HUD Consolidated Plan, Parks and Recreation, Community Sustainability Plan, and each of our individual neighborhood plans as well. Another really wonderful outcome of Imagine Kalamazoo was our public participation policy. When we got to take a step back and look at how we engaged people and the way that we ran our process, we created a manual out of it so that we could really, again, repeat our success, but also pass that along to anyone else who wanted to know, "Hey, how do I run a really, a strong and a robust planning process?" You start by using the "imaginative" phase, is what we call it, and that's when you get to say the most. You get to ask the biggest, broadest questions. And once you get that first level of information, now, for an example, we would go to people in their neighborhoods and many times, we would hear very directly, "What's right outside of their door is their most important item." So they might say to us, "You know what? I can't stand my bus stop. I don't, I don't like our public transportation." And I would say, "Okay, that's a big, broad statement. Can you tell me more? What is it about public transportation? What is it about that bus stop?" "Well, it's, it's not accessible. It doesn't have good signage. We really need a shelter. Can we have a bench?" "Okay." Now we're starting to get at what, how can we solve the problem? What is that next level? And so we start to plan it. And we say, "Okay, well, maybe that original bus stop was on a little bit of a hill. Can we find a flatter spot?" "Yeah, if we move it 30 feet over, there's a flatter spot. We could put the shelter up. Let's work with Metro Transit, make sure that the signage is more legible. Maybe it moves down." We start to adjust things and that's our "designative" phase. How are we gonna solve the problem? And then at the end, we talked about, now, how do we get it funded? How do we get that into a budget and we make sure that those bus stop improvements happen? So that's how this begins to run. Now, each of these phases, as you can imagine, 75,000 residents that we're trying to engage take a long time. So our "imaginative" phase runs for several months. The last time we did this process, it took us about 18 months, 16 to 18 months really, to get it over the finish line. With what we know now about what we would do differently and some of our lessons learned, we're gonna take more time. And some of that time that we're going to do is within our own staff engagement. Something that we really realized after we that we really realized after we had published the document and we came back to our departments, like Parks and Rec and Public Services and Management Services and HR, and we said, look, you guys, we've got this amazing document. We can't wait for you to use it. And they're like, wait, what? What do we have? It looks cool, but how am I in here? Where do I belong? What am I doing? And so, it took us another almost four years to really get everybody up to speed on, oh, that's what you guys were doing. Oh, I get it now. So, this time, we started with staff, and we said, remember last time? We didn't, we didn't dive into you guys too much. This time, we're diving in. And we want to make sure that you know when we're going out to the community and what their feedback was, and we're going to make sure we get you their feedback and we get their, your questions back out to the community as well, and becomes a true dialogue between all of the departments and the community at the same time. So, much of our time right now is really setting up the process. We're asking staff, what should the community know about you and the projects that are going on? And also, what do you need to know from the community? So, we're working on those questions. We're also working on the work groups. Last time, we had about eight work groups that had about 10, eight to 10 people per work group. We reached out to people who know people, lots of organizations that sat on those groups, and we use them in that ways because if I know you have a really incredible and robust email, you know, MailChimp account or something like that, I know you can reach out to people. I know that if you have been doing lots of work in organizations and meeting with folks, that when we look at our data and we go, wow, we're not reaching a lot of people in this demographic or in this neighborhood, that I can use our work groups to say, oh, I know a church you can partner with, or I know the best way to get those flyers out. We have a robust little library system all throughout our neighborhood, and all of a sudden, we're packing things full in, in little libraries. We will use every opportunity to engage people. You know, the last time we reached out, we went to Easter egg hunts and trunk-or-treats and Lunchtime Live and all the art hops. We go to people in Imagine Kalamazoo. We do not always expect people to come to us. We do hold community meetings at major milestones, but most of the time, our staff is going out to the community and hosting those events and making sure that, that we're as accessible as possible. So, just to put a really fine point on the work that we are absolutely in right now to engage our staff is the good governance goal. So, one of the goals that was the least articulated in the strategic vision 10 years ago was good governance. But one of the most important goals for getting the work of the community across the finish line is the good governance goal. We have to make sure that when the city says, we're going to do these wonderful projects and these incredible improvements for our community, we have to be sure that our staff capacity is where it needs to be and our resources are also where they need to be in order to make the community's vision happen. And so, we have been doing some surveying and workshopping with our staff around tools, funding, technology, training, capacity, policies, their leadership support, around all of these different items, saying, what do you need in order for us to go out to the community and for us to make sure that we can do the best work for the community? Again, each department will receive feedback from the community based on these questions that we're also working on with our staff, so that we can engage the community, and then, it's going to be a refinement process, like I said, through the "imagine it," the "plan it," the "design it," and then, finally, our final draft that I'll be able to bring to you, again, probably at the beginning of January 2026, is, is what our target date is right now. The, again, one of the biggest lessons learned and one of the most important parts of this timeline is, is it's ours. It's our timeline, and it's our data to look through and to make sure that we have the community engagement that we want. And if we don't, then we slow down and we make sure that we, we have the community engagement that we need in order to move to the next phase, right? That's something that sometimes when you hire a consultant, consultants have their own timeline, and they cost a lot of money, and so, you don't want to go over that timeline. When they say, well, our engagement is done and it really needs to be done in, in February 25, and we have to move on to the next phase, you know, we're going to, we're going to look at February 2025, and we're going to say, do we have what we need in order to move to the next phase? And we will certainly be in touch with you throughout each of these milestones to let you know exactly where we are and where we feel that we need to go throughout the process as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Rebecca, is there an opportunity for any questions on this, or is this?
Sure.
All right. Any questions from commission on this plan that's been laid out in front of us? I'll let you decide who's going to go first.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Assistant Manager Kik. One thing, this is very exciting, by the way. I mean, it's, I first want to compliment the city manager's team for staying focused on our existing Imagine Kalamazoo plan. There are so many examples, countless examples, in our community and around the country where people spend thousands of dollars on consultants and plans, create a binder, rah rah for a second, and then forget about it, but it is ingrained in everything we do and we see it nonstop. You come back every single year, give us an update on it, and I applaud you and the team for that because I think it's a really powerful testament to your vision, but also staying with that community vision as well. The one thing I, I just wanted to kind of take a pause on, and I really appreciated you explaining each of these steps because it kind of helped me better understand. But when I was first looking at the, the process, when I saw the part that says "staff engagement," it kind of caused me a little pause there for a second. And the reason it caused me some pause is because when I think about an Imagine Kalamazoo plan, I think it should always be centered and started in community. And so, but you definitely, you helped me understand that part of it is that you want to survey to learn what they want to learn from the community. You shared, you, you shared that also that you want to make sure that they have an opportunity to maybe be involved in the process to make sure that they kind of have a grasp of it. I think, I think it might be helpful, maybe some way as we're presenting this to community to maybe reword that a little bit, so it doesn't feel like it's starting and centered around staff, but more so that the staff is laying the groundwork so that we can center it around community. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Again, this is not about staff starting a visioning process before we engage the community. It's making sure that we're not handing a document blind over to our staff and saying, here's what the community said, here's the work that we're doing, and them not having prepared their budgets, not having prepared their capacity, not having prepared the technology or the understanding to get that work done. It's about a partnership, right?
Throughout that process, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think you're explaining how that's going to happen, but I wonder if maybe there's a, a way that we could
Yeah.
Present that in a way that feels like, hey, the staff is gathering from the start to be ready for community, you know?
Yeah.
If that makes any sense.
And I think you'll see it in the, the questions that the staff are asking the community. The, the questions that the staff are asking look like, how can we do this better? How can we streamline this for you? Is there information that you're missing? Are there gaps that you see in something? That's what the staff are asking the community.
Yeah, makes sense.
We aren't saying, here, here's our work plan. No, it's, it's more about, how can we serve you? We're, we're servants, so those are what the questions are for.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Pedal. Mr. Hess.
Sure. Thank you for that, Rebecca. Appreciate the updates. So, you talked about a level of community engagement. What is, what is a good level of community engagement to really, that you might be looking for to, to really say that this plan is representative of all of Kalamazoo? Yeah, we talk about the community, but how are we, I know you have a plan to get there, but what kind of, what, what level is, is acceptable?
So, I believe there, there's lots of models that I ran even when I did Imagine Kalamazoo 2025. So, for example, you can take the very statistical route and say you have a population of 75,000 people, how many people do I need to touch and/or survey in order to get a representative sample? And it's like 2,300 people. Then, you could take each population of each neighborhood, and you could say, okay, well, how about I do it on a neighborhood basis? And we've run numbers on how many people do I need to reach out to in Edison, Northside, Eastside, you know, Oakland, Dry Winchell, Oakwood, you know, based on their population. What we do is kind of something that melds the two, right? We, we know that we want a statistically significant number of people to be involved. Last time, our number was around 4,500, which was fantastic. That blew everything out of the water that we'd ever done before. But it was also making sure that when we went to a meeting, we were also asking people to fill out some basic demographic information for us, neighborhood, age, race and ethnicity, so that we could also say, okay, who are, who's coming to this meeting in this neighborhood? And then, we could look back and say, no, we are not getting people from Millwood to participate. How do we reach out to Millwood? No, we are not getting people under the age of 25. How do we make sure we get more youth to participate? We aren't getting people in Oakwood over 50. You know, we actually had data that we could start to say, let's make sure we're not just, we're not just checking the box. We didn't just get our 2,300 people and moved along, but we actually want to know who is participating, from what neighborhood, who are they, what age are they, where do we need to adjust? How are we making sure we're using our, that's why I talked a little bit about the networks with the work groups that we were talking about, that they're very diverse groups. They're diverse groups that know people and can get to people, so that when we look at our data as a whole, we can go, okay, we need to adjust. Where do we go? What direction do we go in?
Thank you for that. That, that was helpful. And then, just, just, let's just say there's some citizens listening, and, and they want to get involved, and they want to know more. Where, what is the best way for its people in the community to contact IK 2035 at this point? Is there a way that we can know at a point in time?
We haven't launched that yet, but there's still Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, and that's at imaginekalamazoo.com. There is always a "get involved" button right there. Get on our, our email list and make sure you're involved in Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, so that we can certainly get you involved in Imagine Kalamazoo 2035. We'll eventually change that little date on that website, and we'll, we'll move to the next stage. Thank you. Yeah.
Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sam Kik and your team. So, looking forward to IK 2035. And, you know, this encompasses our community, and our community has many neighborhoods in it. So, can you talk about how the city's master plan correlates with a neighborhood master plan as you guys go forward?
Neighborhood plan? Yeah, so, this was an idea that, again, you know, looking at other municipalities at the time, we did not have a lot of neighborhood plans prior to Imagine Kalamazoo 2025. And so, we made it a goal of Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 to produce a neighborhood plan for every neighborhood in the city. So, the master plan is the 10,000-foot vision, and you can, you can say that you might want, you know, a certain type of transportation, or again, you know, where those bus stops go, the way that the trees are planted, or the way that that park looks is very specific to each neighborhood. So, the master plan isn't going to talk about those specifics, right? It's going to tell you there is or isn't a, how many neighborhood parks, and that those bike lanes might join those parks up. But it's going to be the neighborhood plan that tells you, what side of the street is the sidewalk built on, you know, where the tree's planted, what is the zoning that really needs to be refined? We use those neighborhood plans because some neighborhoods are historic districts and have a little more sensitivity. They might want brick-paved streets. The master plan is a little too high-level of a document to really make sure we're going to specify brick-paved streets, but that neighborhood plan can engage their neighborhood residents and renters directly, and they can start to make very specific decisions about that, that neighborhood. When the neighborhood plan is completed, it's brought to the Planning Commission, and they adopt it into the master plan. And so, that's how those documents become codified. And so, I hope that helps you kind of a little bit with the scale of each document?
Yes, so then, my question is, you know, with all the data that we're collecting, you know, there are some neighborhood plans or some neighborhoods that are still struggling to get their master plans done.
Oh, sure.
Could some of that data be used to assist some of these organizations or some of these neighborhood associations that are trying to build their master plan? Could we use some of that data to also
Oh, yeah.
Help them so they're not just out there trying to figure it out themselves?
Oh, yes. We, we give them everything that we do have, that we collected from Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 at that time, because we held, there were some neighborhoods that we combined, like some of the smaller neighborhoods, we would do sort of a little neighborhood regional meeting, but most of the neighborhoods, we did singular meetings to every single one of them, and we gave each one of those neighborhoods all of their Imagine Kalamazoo data. Yeah, we have access to it.
I like that we're already starting to think about the IK 2035.
Yeah.
With this, you know, we're going to be able to plan for funding down the line in everything that we do. We're going to be able to know when specific things in our infrastructure need to be done because hopefully with it, our, our master plan here, we're sometime, we're some kind of way working in the asset management aspect of that, because that's really how we're going to be able to know what needs to be fixed in IK 2045 when we do the next one.
Yeah.
So, I just want to say thank you. Let's keep the momentum and let's keep moving forward. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Any other questions for Rebecca Kik at this time? Okay, now, seeing one, I'll just throw one in here myself, just to think about on the agenda, because there's not obviously a designated space necessarily for city commission, you know, at least on the face of it, as it relates to this planning. And just, I know one thing that we, things can change, ideas and values can change, of course, depending on our every-two-year election cycle here, just noting in your schedule that we will have an election shortly after the July 25 draft it and before the December adopt it. So, I think that will just be another thing, though, a majority of this commission will have elections at that time, just to think about how that thinking is incorporated and how those things might be available in some ways, so that if there is a commission, well, since there will be a commission election that will be occurring between those two events, that those will be ideas or thoughts that can be discussed during that election process also.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you again, Manager Ritzma.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. Next, we have a presentation by
Next, we have a presentation by George Waring, our senior civil engineer. And he's gonna give a Safe Streets for All presentation. And as was noted earlier, there is a item on this evening's business meeting agenda, uh, related to this. So Mr. Waring and Mr. Baker.
Yeah, it's, uh, good afternoon, City Manager, Mayor, City Commissioners. Uh, I just wanna take a moment to come up here and introduce our senior civil engineer, George Waring. Uh, George spent a tremendous amount of time, um, on this work. This is work that, uh, as he'll introduce, um, is gonna take, uh, us a long time to implement. Um, and there's a lot of good things here. Uh, we last left off the SS four A conversation with the city commission back in August of, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we had, uh, accepted the grant. Uh, we didn't know where that work was gonna take place and what that work would look like. So, uh, today we're gonna start to introduce what some of that work will look like, where that work is gonna occur and, uh, what that process is gonna look like. One thing I wanted to note is that this work, although we propose it, um, is not the final product. Uh, this stuff is, um, uh, meant to study our, some of our, uh, traffic concerns that we have here in Kalamazoo. And that there is a, another phase, uh, beyond this, uh, which would be a implementation plan for permanent installation. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to George to introduce us to the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Baker. And, uh, thank you, Commission, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Attorney and City Manager. Thank you for having me out tonight to speak. Um, just wanted to also say a big thank you before we begin the presentation, uh, from our coworker Nolan Bergstrom. Uh, he's one of the planners, uh, with the city and he contributed a lot to this presentation as well. So I'm presenting, but it really is a team effort, uh, between many, many people at the city. So, um, with that, uh, we'll go ahead and get started. So on our, our agenda tonight, uh, we'll have some introductions. Just wanted to introduce myself, some of, some of my background. What are challenges? Why do we have this challenge as the city of Kalamazoo? Uh, why, uh, this intent of Safe Streets for All? Um, so if I say SS four A too often, just correct me, it's Safe Streets for All. And I want to emphasize that of, of the for-all aspect of that. Uh, this city commission directive from August, I wanna kind of talk to that, um, speak that. Uh, so we've spent a lot of time looking at your comments and the things that city commission gave us, uh, at that August meeting when we accepted the grant. And so we've been trying to take that forward as our marching orders. Um, and then finally talking about a change in mindset and what our action is, um, for tonight, uh, and as we go forward as a city. Uh, so just some brief introductions. So, uh, like Director Baker said, uh, my name's George Waring. I've, uh, been with the city now for almost four years. Uh, previous to this, I spent time in the air force as an acquisitions officer. Um, come from a history of, of service. So my dad was twenty-five years in, in the air force as well. He actually flew fighter jets. Um, so I always grew up idolizing wanting to fly fighter jets. Um, but that wasn't what I had. Instead, I got an asphalt and concrete and I love it. So, um, not, not against that at all. Uh, I have a family, uh, two kids, two dogs, lovely wife. Uh, we enjoy the Kalamazoo area and I wouldn't move south again. So, um, a lot of my family came from Southern Illinois. Um, and then now we're up here in Michigan. So some of the places I've lived here, uh, as you can see, kind of all across the board. This is, uh, both in Europe and, and the U.S. So I wanna talk about the problem. So here's, here's the problem we have. So for us in the city of Kalamazoo and nationwide as the country of the United States, uh, we have over four million traffic deaths, um, that have occurred in the U.S. Uh, U.S. wars has only claimed about one point three million. Um, so statistically, that's quite high, especially when you look at the years that, that attributed. Uh, so what we're looking at is, is that crashes have killed more people than most other forms of violence in our nation. And so a, as we look at that, I just want us to pause to take a, take a look at that to really feel that effect. That, you know, when I send my kids and my wife out the door, I don't expect them to die, to die on their way to the grocery store, right? But if I sign up to be part of the military, which I grew up with this background, right? I knew what my dad was getting into. I knew he was gonna fly in the Gulf when that war went on. So, um, with that, like, there's expectation of that, but not necessarily, um, in, uh, in this case. Um, so nationwide, uh, this is where motor vehicle deaths, you can kind of see the trend there. Um, and really what we're seeing from nationally is that, uh, mechanical engineers have played a bigger result than civil engineers in the overall safety. So car safety's really been improved. Um, a lot of the, the safety around traffic signals and mechanisms, uh, in the public sphere have improved a lot. But we haven't really changed our designs, um, to the street space a whole lot since, uh, vehicles came onto our roadways. So since we kind of transitioned from horse buggy, kind of walking society to more driving society, um, that really had, that thought process that hasn't changed a whole lot. One of the other things we're seeing nationally is that people outside vehicles are, are becoming a higher risk of, of being, uh, in a traffic incident and a fatal incident at that compared to those inside a vehicle. The thing I wanted to pause is, as I look at these as an engineer, one of the things I have to remind myself is that a number also means a person. Right? So it's not just like number six thousand seven hundred thirty-three, you know, traffic death. That, that's a person with a background and a name. Um, and so, uh, there's been some really neat community stuff that has helped with story maps that really bring that person out of it. And I wanted to pause on that just to say, you know, when we talk statistics and numbers, that in traffic, we also deal with those are people using cars, walking, biking, taking transit. It's not just, we, we care about the people in those spheres. Not like the fact that the vehicle's moving through the sphere, but the person inside the vehicle moving through that environment. Does that make sense? So, so as we could look to that, that's something I wanna keep in the back of our minds. So some, uh, statistics, just looking at this from a perspective of Boston and Kalamazoo. Uh, so Boston has on average about fifteen fatalities a year. Um, and Kalamazoo has had five in the last five years. So just looking at that comparison over five years, we kind of see that, um, that statistical difference. If we were to balance that out for a population, that would mean Kalamazoo would have forty-four fatalities if we had the, um, population of Boston. So not, not, not great on that front. Uh, these are just some of the five-year, uh, statistics here. Uh, we have the twenty-six fatalities, uh, two hundred and thirty-four pedestrian crashes, one hundred and fifty-five bicycle, bicycle, uh, bicycle crashes and over two thousand injuries. So here's the challenge. Uh, so I present that as the problem. So what is our challenge, right? So, so we see a problem and we could stay with the problem, we can just accept the problem or we can challenge ourselves to actually do something about the problem. And so the challenge with that problem is everyone has a right to safe travel. And how do we decrease those fatalities and those injury incidents to where it is safe for people to travel? And by whatever means they, they, uh, they choose. So some contributing factors. Here are some of the highest. Um, we have lots of stats on these. Engineers like stats. So, um, if you don't, don't become an engineer, I guess, but, um, speed, uh, distractions and then user error. Um, and, and all these three play into effect somehow in, in a crash. What we do know is that speed does kill. And the risk of death goes up as speed increases. So, um, if you remember from physics class, you know, we, we all went through high school at some point to study physics. One of those things is as you go faster and your mass is greater, the effect of that mass and that speed have a greater impact. And so what that means on a human body is that the greater speed you take a mass, the more deadly impact that has on a human body. Versus if it's a slower speed, that mass has less impact on a human body. So there's distractions everywhere, um, visual, manual, cognitive. And your, your tunnel of vision decreases as speed increases. So what you can actually physically see as a human being, uh, gets narrower and narrower the faster you go because your, your brain is trying to receive all that input. And, and so we can only focus on so much at a time. And so as you go faster, you just naturally go in. So that's what, that's looking at there. So user error, you can get into road rage, dangerous driving behavior, not signaling, poor braking techniques. And that really gets in behavior. So that's not something, um, that's something we try to, uh, contemplate with our designs and think about. Um, but user error plays, plays a factor. This is probably my favorite slide in the whole bit. Behavior change. So how I explain this to people is I have a twenty-month-old. And he's a great kid and we sit, we sit down at the table. He loves pasta, right? And he looks like this almost every time he eats pasta. It's because he's starving by the time he gets dinner, even after like four snacks. He's starving. And so when he's sitting at the table, he knows the table rules. He's got a fork. But he's got a big plate of pasta in front of him, which is his favorite food. And, you know, he knows the rule at our table is you're supposed to try to use the fork. But he gives up with it. And when we think about that behavior, why? Why does he give up with it? Because a fork to him, it is almost two-year-old body, doesn't quite, can't quite mechanically work through how to poke it and bring it to his mouth. So it's not efficient. It's not filling his need. So he has this felt need that he has to just shovel the pasta in. So this is why he looks like it. We do the same thing as adults. We do the same thing. We just don't, we don't realize it. So I bring up two streets here. Maybe you're familiar with these, maybe you're not. If you drive West End, you probably are because this is, uh, the signed detour between Burdick Street and Maple Street is kind of a convenient cut through. I ask, so which of these has a slower speed limit? Which has less vehicles? Which street has less lanes? And if you know the answers to those, you know that both of them are twenty-five miles an hour. Both of them have pretty equal vehicles on them quite often. There is a slight variance in ADT, but they're used pretty, pretty frequently in the same type of manner. Um, and one has three lanes, one has two lanes. And from driving on it, I would always say ten out of ten times, Burdick's very frustrating to drive on at twenty-five miles an hour. And why is that? Well, it's because design matters and people's behavior matters in design space. So what they feel in a three-lane road that's made for vehicles is they feel this frustration of, this is made for me. Why can I not go the speed it feels? Because the twenty-five mile per hour isn't the speed that this road feels like I should be able to go. Now, when you get to the thirty-five mile per hour section, you feel a lot better because it's like, oh, this is, it feels like a thirty-five mile per hour road. But why in that twenty-five mile per hour section does it not quite feel that way? But twenty-five mile per hour is correct because of the context of it close to neighborhoods and children and residences. So that's correct as far as like the safety goes, but it feels frustrating as a driver. Like you get there and you're like, oh, I wish I could do something different. And so this is where we get into behavior change and road design. Is driving frustrating? I wish teleportation was invented. Cause then we could get to where we're going right away and we wouldn't have to wait or drive a car across town to do it and get stuck at all the red lights we hate or, you know, wait in line while somebody on, texting in front of us, but we could get there. And so we kind of have two options. We either obey the laws and the speed limit and the, how the road tells us we should be driving. Or we do it the way the road feels and can be driven. And so it's kind of those two competing thoughts that we often see the most erratic driving in roads and why those two things matter so much. Um, so in Tyler terms, the table rules are too inconvenient and the need is too great. So just think about that when, when you're driving and it, cause I, 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 I'm a driver, so I, I drive quite frequently. Um, and it's, it's difficult. So here's some contributing factors. So driving's a privilege. It's not a right. And there's about forty percent of households who have one car, which means that the rest of the household lies on other means of transportation. So what we're trying to do is, is look out for all drivers and all users of the street space. So drivers, bicyclists, pedestrians, those who take transit. Because we know that there's a considerable amount of people who use the street space up for something other than driving. So that brings me to SS four A. So we kind of have the problem, what we're thinking about and the challenge we have for it, and then kind of the behavior. So what's the intent of Safe Streets for All? The intent is that we design and change the streets using the safe system approach. So this is death and serious injuries are unacceptable, that humans make mistakes, right? So we're, we're human beings. We're gonna make mistakes. Also that we're vulnerable. We're not gonna live forever. We're mortal beings. Um, responsibility is shared between everyone involved in the street space. So between the designer and the people using it and public safety and those using it. Uh, and safety is proactive. We don't wait. And then finally redundancy is, is crucial. So the intent is a comprehensive street safety. And so how are we gonna make the streets safe for everyone using that space? So we're looking with the safety action plan at intersection safety, street lighting safety, bus safety, sidewalk safety, pedestrian safety, in essence, overall street safety. So how do we make the streets safer for those using it? And, and again, as Director Baker alluded to it, uh, this was in August twenty twenty-three. We accepted the Safe Streets Plan as a supplemental action plan. So it's made to give us a timeline of how do we actually implement these things? And so this is a federal award. Um, this is something that, that we're looking at to give us kind of a roadmap for the future as we go forward. Um, so this lets us be able to be ready to deliver on the strategic vision goals, right? IK twenty twenty-five gave us this great strategic vision and all these wonderful goals underneath it, which we present to you as city commissioner and say, here's this project, here's how it meets these goals. Here's this project, here's how it meets these goals. This really lets us deliver on that plan process and say, all those safety goals that were in there in IK twenty twenty-five, which is in every single one of these lines, every single one of these lines has a safety aspect to it. Um, that's how we are ready to do it. Uh, so what is the Safe Streets for All? It's a supplemental action plan. Uh, it's to address safety on all of Kalamazoo city streets. Uh, it's a roadmap for future improvements. Uh, and it's a plan that lets us be competitive for future grant opportunities and money coming in. And it's able to install quick win countermeasures for trial and study right now. So that was part of the plan. We'll get to that in a moment. What is Safe Streets not? It is not a fund we can use to resurface roads, a fund to build sidewalks. It's not a fund we can use for other purposes we so choose. Um, we have to stick within the grant. Uh, it's not city taxpayer money, though it is federal money, um, and it is dedicated to roadway safety. Uh, for permanent features such as sidewalks, pedestrian islands, bump outs, new pathways, et cetera. Those will have to come in an implementation grant. So what are the quick win safety projects? So the quick win safety projects are gonna be, we're looking at things that work. So there was a whole list given in the grant that said, here are the things that are actually effective and you can use. Um, so of those, uh, we have speed humps and tables, trail pedestrian refuge areas, uh, protecting existing bike lanes and trialing how that goes, uh, piloting two-way bike facilities and then temporary intersection modifications and changes. So next, uh, city commission directive. Uh, so this, we, we looked at the, uh, meeting minutes and what was said at the city commission meeting in August. And these are the three things that we pulled out from that, that meeting. Uh, so ensure the public has input, utilizing core neighborhoods and be transparent and communicative. So public participation, I, I've read through, I wouldn't say line by line, but every single of these as far as it deems to my job description and Safe Streets for All. Um, and these are all the different plans that have a ton of public participation next to it, um, that talk about safe, safety and safety on the streets. Additionally, we went out with that and we went further, um, and we did our own survey work, uh, as well as, uh, we canvassed the, the neighborhoods that we were planning work in and proposing work in and, and really requested from them, hey, what did you, what do you think of this work? Here's what we're proposing and getting back to us. We had over a thousand survey responses, which is the highest I've seen since being here at the city. Um, we did over, uh, three months and the results in summary have been posted to the website. So if you're interested in the details of that, that, that's there on the website. Um, additional efforts that went into this were West Endon Park, uh, Streets for All, creating a connected city, uh, the Oakland Winchell work, and then the Northside Traffic Coming. The other thing we, we, uh, we heard from city commission was a focus on core neighborhoods. Um, so this is where the resources are really funded in the quick win. Um, so when we're looking at the planning efforts, the other four hundred thousand dollars that are part of this, um, that went, that's going, looking citywide. But we had to choose kind of some places to try our quick win in spots where they would work, um, where we had the, the right-of-way space, where we can make changes that were temporary and trial study worthy. Um, and we could do that within the budget we were given. So. And then additional slide on just communicating that out. Um, so by the numbers, uh, we had a, had a lot of- So by the numbers, we had, had a lot of input and a lot of materials sent out to the public and received a lot of feedback. And we're still receiving feedback. I get stuff in my email all the time, both from 311, from residents, from additional feedback we're doing. So actually implementing this. So we have the Safety Action Plan, which is going to start this year. And we're gonna be looking, working on that planning process with a consultant. We have two consultants that we have, that have responded. And we have chosen out of those who responded, we had a lot who actually responded to the call for projects. And that will take up the remainder of this year and into next year. And then the part two of that is the quick win projects. So what's shown here are just some examples of what those might look like. Those aren't the design pictures of what they're gonna look like here in the city, but just some examples of, of things that are on that list. Lastly, I want to talk about just a change in mindset. So as we think about Safe Streets for All, really what it requires is us to change our thinking and change our mindset. So I like this quote, "Do the best you can until you know better, and then when you know better, do better." Right? Kind of obvious thinking, like, don't stay stuck in where you're at, but if you know how to do something better, try to do it better. So what drove me to become an engineer? My mom said I used to try all sorts of dumb ways to do chores around the house. And she'd just watch me try something for like an hour and just waste an hour of my life trying to work on a chore that could have been done the right way the first time. But, but that's, but that's what makes me enjoy what I get to do is because we want to do better. We want to try to do better than what's been there before. And doing nothing is an active choice in this case, because we know the problem. We know some, we know things that work, and we're studying to see what, what's gonna be effective here in the city of Kalamazoo. And so to make a real difference, changes required. Most either hate change or welcome it, it's a pretty polarizing thing. And there's always gonna be some who resist change. But why do we want to change? It's really, we want to change because we want streets to be safe. We want people to be able to get from A to B, see their loved ones, get their groceries, go to a doctor's appointment, go to work, come home without having to worry about safety. And with that, it means shifting a mindset. So safety of all modes of travel is always top of mind. So when we look at projects, how do we design it to where safety is the number one thing we're thinking of? It's always on top of our minds. And that no matter which way you choose to travel, you should be able to travel safely doing that. And then thinking that death on our roads isn't acceptable, right? So I, like, I know crashes are gonna happen. I mean statistically, they're gonna happen. I cannot prevent a crash. But what I can do is prevent the really bad crashes. What we can do is think about, how do we keep somebody from dying in a crash? How do we build that redundancy into our system to where when somebody gets in a crash, the car's safer, the street's safer, their speed's slower? There's less likelihood that there, there're gonna be a traffic fatality. And then minor time savings isn't a justification for less safety? And then making all modes of transportation viable and safe options. So we don't want to wait till something happens, we want to try to be proactive in, in addressing it. I have this quote from Secretary Buttigieg. And what we're doing isn't something that's new. It's not exotic, it's not something from left field. It, it's the national approach. And we actually have cities here in Michigan who are doing it right now. And, and what we really want to see as a staff is, what does that look like for us to do as the city of Kalamazoo? So we're unique, we're the city of Kalamazoo. How do we, how do we see safer streets in, in our city? How do we, how do we go forward with that? Okay, so now we get to the part where taking action. What does that look like? So provide, we want to look at the grant and provide the support it needs for the change to actually happen. So we looked at the grant. We want to advocate for safety, really asking the Commission to look at supporting the change, advocating for the safety, researching and informing, dealing in truth and facts, and then hearing and reading the stories of those impacted. And tonight, there are gonna be two items on the agenda. One is for the Safety Action Plan of Part One. And then the other one is gonna be for one of the quick win items that's gonna be on the agenda. And really, those, those two items are the first steps in this process towards seeing, okay, what, what works for our city? What makes our streets safer? What doesn't make it safer? And how do we see that implemented over time? So in review, we looked at our challenge. Really, what, why are our streets not safe? What makes streets safe? And then we looked at, what is the intent of Safe Streets for All? What is it meant to do? Then we looked at the Commission Directive. What do we hear from the last meeting in August and trying to tie that to what we're doing now? And then looking at what the implementation of Safe Streets for All looks like at this point in the city of Kalamazoo. And really, that's gonna require for us a change in mindset of how we think about streets, how we think about safety. And then lastly, the City's Commission Action, which is action for tonight, which is to really look at that Safe Streets for All items on, in the next meeting. And then hopefully those are meeting the city goals and those, those press forward and we get to see our streets become safer. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time and open it up to if there are any questions.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Waring, for coming, spending some time with us and providing this very detailed and easy-to-follow presentation. I appreciate that quite a bit. Questions from Commission? Yeah, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. As an engineer, I do love stats too, so I appreciate that little nod as well. Speaking of stats, one of the ones that spoke to me was the disproportionate amount of people of color that are impacted by these vehicular deaths. Thank you for providing the contributing factors that lead to us as a nation dealing with some of these deaths. But which ones, which factors in particular have you, through your research, found lead to such a large discrepancy between populations?
Yeah, I, I think there are two things. I think the biggest one I've seen is the factor of speed and how that's seen in any particular community. Is speed oftentimes, those are the worst crashes and have the highest impact on, on the people involved. And I don't know if that's community-specific as much. I don't think, at least the data I've looked at, has a lot of reference to that. But I have seen speed as be the number one issue as to why crashes are severe as they are, at least here in Kalamazoo.
Then a follow-up. I like the quick win diagram that you showed there that shows, you know, the proportionate amount of money being spent in each neighborhood. Being that people of color are impacted disproportionately by these deaths. How will that play into the implementation plan for some of these projects in terms of prioritization?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a, that's a great thought. So one of the things that we saw in the proposals and actually why we selected the consultants we did was because of their, their emphasis on looking at those stats as a collective whole and trying to best position ourselves for federal grants and what those are gonna look like, which have been really focused on trying to service those areas with varying degrees of population, with those who have been neglected in the past and trying to rectify those, those mistakes of the past where those have been funded, have been underfunded. And so we've seen a lot of the grants facing towards that. So this consultants we selected really had an emphasis on trying to get that collective data from everyone and really trying to get that participation from all neighborhoods and from all areas of the city to, to really buy into what does the safety look like? And really have their feedback into that plan.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Hesse?
Yeah, thank you. You know, George, you didn't read Secretary Buttigieg's quote, and I'd like to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Together, we can act to change the culture and the expectations. We are so accustomed to hazards on our roads that we sometimes behave as if the risks of today's roadways are inevitable. But they're not. People should leave the house and know they're going to get to their destination safely. Once we believe that and believe in our ability to collectively make progress, once we demand better, we will see more positive changes cascading across governments and industry. And, and I really appreciate you working on that critical piece of, of mindset of a driver. As you were talking, all I could hear was Mr. Frank Gore. Mr. Frank Gore was my driver's ed teacher back in 1970, whatever, whenever it was in the 70s. But he said, "You are driving a weapon." And that's never, I've never forgotten that. It's a weapon. And, you know, Commissioner Wilson was talking about a weapon and comparing it to gun deaths. And it's, it's death. And it's unnecessary death. So I appreciate your work on this. I will support the city in every, whatever way we can to do Safe Streets for All. And I appreciate you, your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Prado?
Sure. Really appreciate you presenting to us today, and I really think you did an effective job at humanizing the statistics, which I think is vitally important. You know, we're talking about traffic calming or safe streets. Those are impacts on real people. And I think we'd probably be hard-pressed if we polled everybody who's here tonight. You know, raise your hand if you've ever been a, a vehicle accident. Raise your hand if you've ever been injured in a vehicle accident. I bet decent proportion of people who are here at least know somebody in their immediate family who has been hospitalized for an extended period. One of my first memories growing up at age six was seeing my best friend that lived across the street in a casket. He was killed in a vehicular accident on the corner of Sprinkle and East Main. And, you know, I think it, it, those statistics where you talked about those human stories of people of realizing that has real toll on people and lives and is just critically important. Because I think too, too often we get fixated on, hey, one pilot project didn't go well, right? But I think what we've seen is a city that's willing to listen and, you know, a commission that's willing to listen and to try to fine-tune things when we find that those small pieces don't work well. But that we don't lose track of this greater work that we're trying to do on a seismic level. I guess my question to you is, when you look back, say, five, 10 years from now, from this work that we're doing, what, what do you see the city of Kalamazoo looking and feeling like when this work has been implemented?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I, I think when I, when I look forward and what I would imagine is that, you know, I can basically choose how I want to get around without having to feel like I have to drive a vehicle to be safe. Or take transit to be safe. I think that's the biggest thing. It is that when, when I leave my house, I want to be able to know, like, okay, I can take my kids out. Like, the biggest thing I think through as a dad right now is I want to be able to take them out the front door and not worry when I get close to a road, like, that a vehicle's gonna come off it and hit it at a high, high speed. I, I think about that all the time, mostly probably because I read crash reports sometimes and know the angles. And so, and, and there's that engineering part of me that's always going in my head of, if it, if they hit at this angle, where are they coming? And, and not having to worry about that, not having that be the forefront of my mind in five to 10 years would be amazing to be able to walk out and not, not feel like that's a thought that's constantly running through and it, and a highly likely thought. And, you know, I've been here close enough, you know, working on the streets and been close enough to that to know that's a, it's a likely thing. So I think in five, 10 years, I would just like to not have to worry that that's gonna be my kids, really. I mean, I guess I can care a lot less about myself in, in some ways, but really kids, my wife, and not, not having that be there for them.
And I think one thing that's particularly hard when you're in a political sphere is that oftentimes people want action right now. They want to see, you know, okay, I've been frustrated because, you know, I've been around, having to work around traffic in cones for six months. And so like, well, why is it taking so long? And I mean, what would you say to people who are frustrated that it's taking, you know, takes a long time? Or, you know, isn't something that we instantaneously see a change in that we're, we're being told that's gonna happen? What would you say to them?
I would say to them that we've had a very short time to be able to, to do anything about it. When you think in the, in the breadth of human history, cars have barely been around 100 years. And in the mass, you know, use, barely been around 100 years. It took us a long time to figure out some things. And so I would say to that, to, to have patience and to really think of people as, as human. You know, so if somebody's getting impatient, like, think of people as human. You know, we're out there. I mean, I've gotten the wheel jerked at me because I've been putting up cones. I'm a human, I got a wife and kids I gotta go home to. And I was just doing my job, you know? And so really, when we get in those situations, I, I think it's really taken the mindset of, and people are humans. They, they have souls, they matter. And really kind of bringing it down to that level, that always helps me when I get frustrated at somebody. Because even the person doing it is a human. You know, and so what's my reaction to them? Because they're, they're human. They were, you know, they have value. And so even in my pursuit of safety, how I even think about the people who aren't safe is also important. And my wife corrects me sometimes, you know, like, man, that person's so unsafe. She's like, the kids are in the back, like, sorry. You know, but really thinking of people as people. And I think that's, that's the biggest thing. How do we think of people as people? And if it's taking a while, it's okay. And I think because sometimes we're, we're a microwave culture. And construction, you know, it takes 27 days for concrete to cure fully, so. It's not exactly 30 seconds for your popcorn, so. Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Waring. I just had a, a couple of questions, or mainly just one. So when you talk, so when we talk about, Commissioner Prado said, there are some pilots that we try that don't always work. And so I'm kind of wondering, with some of these pilots that are happening and what we're gonna be putting together, especially within our core neighborhoods, just, I guess more of a statement, more focusing that they're pleasing to the eye. Not everything can always be pleasing to the eye, but we definitely want to think about all of the neighborhoods that we're going into, that we're going to be doing pilots or putting something in there permanently. You know, we want to make sure that it still fits within the culture of the neighborhood. And then we also realize that sometimes things work and sometimes things don't work. And I do want to say, I believe you're referring to items on our business meeting today of items three and four. And, you know, I think it's wonderful that you partnered with Mode Shift to do that small pilot to now turn this into a three-year pilot that the residents actually want. So hopefully that we'll be able to utilize them going forward as we think about other things within the other core neighborhoods that we're starting to do.
Yeah, sure.
Appreciate that. Appreciate keeping us safe.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Commissioner Decker. Any other questions for George? All right, thank you once again, I appreciate it. It's a pleasure having you here. And I know we're gonna be talking on a regular basis as we go forward, so thank you so much. Manager Risma?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And that concludes our work session, part of the Committee of the Whole Meeting. And I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Manager Risma. Now is the opportunity for Commissioner comments for the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Just a reminder for anyone who's, might be watching our meeting here, there will also be an opportunity for Commissioner comments at the end of our business meeting, which is starting in about a half an hour. Any Commissioner comments at this time? Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make this real quick, and I will also say this at our business meeting. I want to give a great shout-out to our CPED team and the inspection team for helping me out today. That was very, I'm very grateful for you. I also want to give a shout-out to the Shell at Michigan and Weston Edge, because they also helped me out in the bind today. So there is still civility in the world, and I just want to let everybody know that. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Decker? Any other comments for the Committee of the Whole Meeting? All right, seeing none. This meeting is adjourned, and we will be back here for our regular business meeting at 7 o'clock. Thank you.